Tell us if you could do a roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett.
Present.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Present.
Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Canaz.
Present.
Councilmember Miller.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Now I invite everyone to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So they make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to add item M to approve the approval of posting an opposition to the city clerk.
You mean L?
No.
I have an old version of the... I'll end my motion to the end of whatever the action requests are, whatever the listed action requests are.
So L?
I must have an old agenda.
So L? Yes.
Yep.
Probably, yeah. Or I need to learn the alphabet, one or the other.
Second.
Then moved in second. Any discussion around the... I don't think you need to approve a discussion. Well, is there any discussion around the approval of the agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is not approved. First up, we have a presentation of distinguished service awards to council members Ian Ferguson, Salim Sadiqi, and Dawn Medley. Are they actually here? Hey, Ian. Good evening.
That's a discussion.
Go ahead. Ian can have a seat. Okay, so who is presenting the distinguished service award? I guess I... Do you actually have the...
I'm here.
Okay. Thank you. So we want to present to the previous council a distinguished service award, and this is a recognition of an inspirational leader who made a difference and extraordinary contributions to the city of Lathar Village. And I must say, it was my pleasure to work with you, and I am honored to be able to present this to you. If you would like to say something, you'd be limited.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and God bless everyone.
Thank you. And we'll be mailing or giving me to the council. The protest... We are saying... Sorry about that, I didn't... I apologize.
So just do another?
Yes. Introduce yourselves and...
All right, Ime Epinio, CEO of SGRX, and me is Heather Kozowski, our pharmacy network manager. We are here to talk about our SGRX savings program, which is a prescription savings program that's designed to provide relief to the underinsured and uninsured. Underinsured meaning you have insurance. And you need to have high deductible, co-pays, you have drugs that are not covered, and you're having to pay cash for it. So in those cases, you're shopping around and looking at different portals out there with RX Single Care to find the best possible price. And in uninsured meaning either you have no coverage, or they give the drugs not covered, you pay pass for it. The way the program is designed is a free program. We have almost 30,000 stores nationwide, including CVS, Walgreens, Walmart, Myers, Kroger's, all of those primary grocery chains and major stores are included. There's a portal that you're able to go to to be able to price some medication in advance of going to the pharmacy. It allows you to put in the drug information, to put in your zip code, which will tell you how many pharmacies are within that square mile, and also will compare prices between pharmacies. And in addition to that, we have a program called our Prescription Assistance Program, which allows us to be able to work with drug manufacturers to be able to optimize pricing or copay waivers for folks that are living with chronic illnesses and paying exorbitant amount of pricing for those high-cost medications. Again, that's a free portion of the program that we're providing. The way the program is structured, there's no, again, no costs to the city, no cost to the patient. It can be something that can be used for employees, for residents. It is not an insurance product, so it can be used as supplemental product. If you have a program that has, again, high deductible, like co-pays, it's a great way to be able to subsidize those costs. Any questions?
Did it ask previously, is there kind of qualification for people to be able to take part in this, or is it open to anyone?
Open to any.
Awesome. Thank you.
Now you tell me after paying $300. Any other questions before then? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda and the things that are under the consent agenda, excuse me, are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the city council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed, or items will be removed from the consent agenda and discussed separately immediately after consent agenda approval in its normal sequence on the regular agenda. Is there anything that needs to be moved from the consent agenda? As you see what's under there, it's gonna be the city council minutes. For... It's the November code enforcement. Like the services report, Lathar Village PD department report, except we are pulling out the traffic detail order.
Traffic control order.
Yeah, that's what I really have written down, believe it or not. November permits, reports, CD, DDA, December reports, and this first one's report. Is there anything that you want pulled out besides the one? I'm asking if someone wants something to be pulled out first. Okay, so take a motion for it.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the removal of the traffic control order to discuss separately.
It's been moved in second. So that one's gonna go right after it. And actually, I may have mistaken from the beginning, we're gonna do roll calls. So, um, any discussion on that? Would be none. So a whole roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Another discussion of the traffic. It is 40... 46. When was that added? It's...
It's in there. It's not added. It's not added.
No, no, when I printed this out, it wasn't on there. It was some... It's under the PD report. Yeah, okay, thank you.
So Mayor and Council, I have prepared a traffic control order. This order is for the intersection of Red River and Rainbow Circle. We've put our traffic speed monitoring signs in our... It also counts the amount of cars. We did that based on two things. We had one significant accident at that intersection. There's currently no signage there. We've also received multiple requests for stop signs to be there just to slow traffic down. In the interim, we did put temporary stop signs on Rainbow Circle to see how that would slow traffic down. It definitely has had an effect, but in this traffic control order, I'm asking we do stop signs on all four corners.
Thank you. Next, we have the public comment for items that are on the agenda. All speakers are limited to three minutes. And when it comes to the public comments, there's no dialogue or debates with the members of council and the public. However, the council can address any questions during the council comment section if they choose to. Is there anyone that would like to make a public comment? Okay, thank you. Then I'm here.
Okay. There is public in the meeting place, so now would be the opportunity for them to come down to.
Okay.
If there's anybody else that wants to speak.
Oh, wait.
Have one of his time.
Thank you. We have any... So we're going to our action reports. First one. It's a considerable approval to participate in the SGRX Prescription Savings Program. One second. Yeah, now I'm like... Gotcha. Just like, okay. Um, so I don't have... I'm trying to get what pages that the actual wording is on.
I didn't, you know, I didn't, I neglected to put a memo in there for...
Action. I'll make a motion to approve the participation of the city of Lathar Village in the SGRX Prescription Drops.
There a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Thank you. Someone can tell if they're still here that they'll have to come back here, but they... So... So the next item up is chapter 30, Article II, reading amendment, Article II, Stormwater Management.
This is the second reading. This was in your packet's last one. This is an object of the city's stormwater ordinance and, excuse me, it's adapting changes recommended by Oakland County to bring our ordinance up to the same standards with respect to Oakland County has in their county's...
Thank you. Someone would like to make the motion.
I move to approve the second reading and adoption of... Of amendment, Stormwater Management Ordinance, Chapter 30, Article II.
Second, second. It's been moved in second. Was there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor. Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Next up is the special assessment resolution and scheduled public hearing for January 24, 2022.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Every year, we do a special assessment for the water and sewer nuisance cuts, any general purposes that we have. We start with the water. We take the back to 30, over 200, but it is... The... 20... To tax... Oh. We are asked, are on this list, and at the point of war, it will be to special assessments, how we taxes. And we do this every year.
Thank you. Sorry.
We're not... They tax... If they pay their taxes, we would get the money when they pay their taxes, but if not, Oakland County will make us hold on it, and then they will go after any differences. And usually, by the time the assessment rule gets rolled over, we have about half the month we have right now. These are, these are one-year.
Okay. Yes, sorry, can we... Can we make the motion first?
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolutions of...
Okay, so moved in second. Now, we can have a discussion about for that council.
Yes, these are one-year.
Okay.
Always staring. Every year, when I see that number, third of a million dollars in water, it's like, it's crazy, but...
I mean, you're gonna get...
Yeah, but it's crazy.
But most of some people, that's just how they...
How they do it, yeah.
Any further, any further discussions regarding?
That the public can come and talk to the council about it.
It's part of a special assessment under the state statute that enables the city to utilize public special assessments like these. You have to give the individuals that are put on this role an opportunity to comment on it. The replacement on it all, so if they're in the safe or something like that, they have an opportunity to come and object. So if they don't object to that hearing, then it has potential consequences to the legal challenge that we have a future need.
So we're all here on the 24th?
That is on the council part of your...
It's already a part of our meeting.
So we already got a meeting and now we're part of it.
Yes, I was looking back under, or was it under 10? If you go back to the agenda?
Yes.
It's right under 10, it says public hearing, so it was going right there.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yep.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. We have the... Third consideration for approval for the city council meeting dates and city observe holiday.
Good evening, Mayor and councils. Yes, so in your packet, you have the proposed 2022 meeting dates for your consideration. Also, you will need to make a decision on how you would like to treat Indigenous Peoples' Day, which will be October 10th, the second Tuesday of October, and as well as June 14th. Previously, council has asked about how those latter two holidays are being celebrated. Southfield and Oak Park will be celebrating those, and will be close to the public. Beverly Hills is recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day and still is making a decision on Juneteenth. And Berkeley is acknowledging both the resolution, so... So we can try somehow indicate that we're gonna adopt those meetings that...
I move to adopt the attached resolution for the 2022 city council meeting schedule and city observe holidays.
So you just want, sorry, should I include those two days in there or not? Is that something separate?
And you consider the...
I'm sorry, but one thing, we are agreeing that we're gonna observe those two particular dates. As I closed, as closed.
Correct. That's that, you're not, okay, okay.
Yeah. That's what I'm saying. I think that it needs to also, in correction, if I'm wrong, city attorney, that it needs to say that it also adopts a tax resolution for 2022, so we... With the two days being announced, they're being closed.
Yes, that is my understanding. Okay. Is that right?
So they are included in the... Special holidays included in this packet, the 140, it did include both of those holidays already.
As in being closed?
As they're being closed, though?
That's what they are.
The memo in the packet is, does not specify having, having those two dates closed. Every other holiday listed is observed as being closed, city hall being closed.
So I think that the motion needs to say, including the two days that are in question, they should be considered to be closed.
I understand what you're saying. Okay, I move to adopt the attached resolution for the 2022 city council meeting schedule and city observe holidays, as well as the two discussed holidays, Indigenous Peoples' Day and Juneteenth, to be, for, to make sure the office or city council, city hall is closed.
Okay. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Isn't... Does Peoples' Day change? We changed that.
No.
It's been a couple years. It's still closed. We're still closed, but the thing is strange.
No, I guess we were.
Oh, I'm sorry, no. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
No.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Next up, we have approval. It's considered for approval of the board of review meeting date in 2022, which will be March July.
Yes, Mayor and Council. Every year, we come to with the resolution for our board of review dates. March is the dates that the residents can come and disagree with their taxable values, their assessed values. This is their chance to come to the board of review to have their assessments looked at. And the summer and winter, or July and December boards are for clerical errors and also for power issues that we have. So those are the dates that are by statute, and we would like to get those approved, please. Thank you.
You can first...
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the 2022 board of review meeting schedule.
Second.
So it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yes. Who makes up the board of review? Three residents, and, well, four residents, actually, four residents, but three, we only need three for the board, two to be at forum. And I have an alternate, and fourth one is an alternate in case somebody can't make it. And then our assessor is there, but our assessor has very little input. I mean, she just helps them with different things. But it is...
Any other official questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canaz.
Yes.
Councilwoman Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion, Gary.
Thank you. Next, we have a consideration for approval of the American Rescue Plan Act, AARP, fund expenditures.
Hello, and Mayor, okay. So the city was awarded just over $400,000 in American Rescue Plan funds. And our first disbursement is to be spent by the end of this year in the amount of $250,000. Previously, council was provided with a list of possible items that those funds could be used on. Administration has prioritized our top four for your consideration, those being a new backup generator for city hall, covering the match, the city's required match for the Oakland County Togethers grant for the lock, the new door locking system, elevator repairs, and to cover any expenses as part of the storms, your cameraing. So you have in your packets quotes for all of those items, and we just would like your steering direction on what you would like us to spend those funds on.
So this would be picking out one of these.
At least one of those. One or more of those items to spend, spend the ARP funds on. That's what I'm asking, it's just...
I'll make a motion to authorize $250,000 to American Rescue Plan Act funds to cover the costs of the backup city hall generator, the first period of lockdown, elevator repair and upgrades, and for the balance, I think it goes to the sewer, sewer video, video project.
Second question.
It's been moved in second. Go ahead.
So for the storm sewer system.
Yes.
Could we possibly, let's make that motion for when the rest of the AARP funds come in, instead of approving it right now? Because we're using the balance of the AARP funds, correct, for the sewer, the sponge sewer system video upgrades.
I guess you could, you could make that motion.
I mean, is there something else that you, I mean, I could give some infrastructure suggestions that are approved by AARP.
I guess I just would like to see these come, then we can address the storm sewer system once we get the actual... address the storm sewer system once we get the actual funding for.
Do you want to get the second funding?
Yes, yeah.
So it's all spent already? I guess I didn't understand that.
No, you're, you're choosing right now how to spend those A R P funds.
Two hundred fifty thousand, not the total four hundred and twenty-eight thousand one ninety-nine. Right now, the focus is the two hundred and fifty thousand. You can certainly choose to allocate the entire four hundred and twenty. I thought that's what Jay, what Jalen was saying, so, okay.
That's why I also was confused, because the, uh, what it looks like for this proposal for the, the electrical for the generator is going to take up a bulk of that, right? Correct the cause and then let me finish saying, that's unfinished. And then the second one was for the elevator, which would be not doing math fast in my head. So. Thank you. Um, but I think that we also need to have wiggle room. That's where I'm going with this, because if anything happens, um, so I agree with what you're saying. I guess I think I'm.
So, just, and council, if you could possibly entertain amendment to the motion to specify there's two bids for the, the elevator work.
Okay.
Because both bids would exceed the spending threshold of the administration, uh, we need to be some clarification on to which bid is authorized or, like you're saying, there might be one additional one coming in.
That's what I asked about in the study session.
So can we just like, so you said there's another one that might be coming in edit. I wasn't looking for that one. Another one that might be coming in for the elevators?
Three, three estimates.
Well, I asked for a third company to provide us with a quote, I believe, the last communication I saw, that individual was out of the office ill, so I don't know if he's.
But normally you try to do three weeks anyway, so maybe it needs to just be amended where we do the. First two, we want to look into this, right?
Might we say one good current generator?
Uh, there should. And.
So one sixty-six.
Yes.
That's, that's, he was also looking for a secondary bid for that, but.
That was kind of the big ticket value. It's a second bid, absolutely.
The only problem with the, um, getting a second bid this time for that is that we're under the gun for time.
Well, do we have one that was out there that we just haven't found back yet?
Uh, one is that we, we have other ones that have been requested, but we don't have, this is the only bid we've received thus far. But you did go out and try to get three of them. Yes, I mean, yes.
So at a later date, you could approve. Between those three bids, we could approve and we might get a bid that comes in lower.
So, but they're saying a certain amount has to be spent before the end of the year, so we don't have the opportunity to wait to.
Right, the two fifty, it does need to be allocated. You know, just to, I know in terms of the generator, I mean, it is a huge ticket item, but it is definitely something necessary right now. Uh, I mean, city hall, city hall goes down and we're, we're down on our side. Um, it has impacted the police operations, um, more recently, so this would be a whole, a whole building generator.
Yeah.
I, and I agree, I'm just saying it's a huge ticket item to just have one day on. I mean, that's the, that to me is the most important one. I want to make sure I'm a hundred percent comfortable with the person who puts a bid together and what we're getting and that it's a good value. I, I have no idea, never. What it generates. Don't know if that's a good deal or who knows? That's my. They probably were required to give for the charter, were required to get.
Um, my additional bid is over five thousand dollars. You said you went out and asked for three, that he can't twist their arm, make them respond, but they did what they were supposed to do, yes. And we have to make a decision by on something today.
And it, does it always go down to the wire as far as?
Sometimes.
The due date's the thirty-first of December.
This would be the federal government did this.
Yes, this is not our deadline. This was imposed upon us. Right, but you said you were talking about this in May or something. What's, what's delayed it or, you know, what is that? Federal government has delayed it. Um, it may be, we were aware that we were going to be getting some level of funding and so the original list that council discussed back in June was sort of the wish list, if you will, of when we, when we finally get our, our funds, we would like to maybe consider these items. So that was the bulk of the discussion that happened, so. The federal government just released these funds. I mean, this is just something we need to spend.
Okay. So you want to make, uh, uh, do you want to adjust it?
Well, I'm gonna ask Scott, because it's earlier, I thought, when we talked about the study session, you were saying authorize, you know, basically up to two hundred fifty thousand dollars for these expenditures. There's a guy, I had asked the question about the elevator because they have the science, which was one of the two elevators, so I couldn't come up with an exact total, so.
Yeah, it's, well, again, it sounds like you're, I mean, we're lumping all of these purchases as you want, based on the availabilities of federal cars. So, yeah, the purchase, I guess, if council wants to identify the items, the items to be, spend the funds on, with the cost not to exceed in two hundred fifty thousand dollars and leave it to the judge and the administrators as to which individual organization might perform the services of lowest.
Time for the, another potential estimate for the generator, but yeah, so, so I guess the only thing I need to amend to my uh, motion is, is not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I make you, so to repeat the whole motion, the motion to authorize, um, American Rescue Plan Act funds not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand dollars in total, uh, towards, uh, backup generator from city hall, uh, door security locking system, elevator repairs, and then the storm, unless we, I'll start it out with the storm sewer and then we want to discuss something else.
So a second just needed.
Second.
I think there was a, there was a.
There was a motion.
There's a second please.
So now, um, what we are, uh, could be discussing taking a motion on is to authorize the interim administrative, so you just buy the, uh, A R P A funds to not exceed, I mean, for these items, but not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which will be covering the backup generator, the door security lock system, elevator and the source of sewer system. For that discussion? Next, um, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next, we have the approval. Group LLC for the, for Gada, the horror of.
Yes, council, um, requesting that you approve, uh, this contract with Trendseth Communication. This again is for the door locking system. The current system we have is obsolete. Is, uh, affixed to one computer in the police department that is really, uh, accessed by the police clerk who's only here during business hours. So as events are going, ongoing, uh, different parties in that, we have no way to adjust that schedule. This new system will be a, we can designate multiple administrators to handle these, uh, making adjustments as scheduled. Uh, it would, uh, just be a, a better solution than what we have currently.
Thank you. Set the vote. For.
I'm a motion to, I'm going to approve the O C in the amount of fourteen thousand nine hundred sixty-eight dollars and sixteen cents for the key was door security systems and authorize the police chief to sign the contract and related documents.
Second, it's the movement second. Is there any discussion?
One question. How is this different than the door security locking system we just? It's not, it's the same one.
Oh.
But we're just.
Oh.
The, the previous motion was to authorize using A R P funds to cover that. Oh, so we did cover it.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
So, uh, any further additional comments?
Okay.
That's okay.
It's how they lock the systems.
In addition to two fifty? This is from the two fifty.
Right. I'm already spending four thousand six hundred and twenty-three of the eight K.
Yeah, the other part of the funds came from the open gallery grant.
Any, uh, additional questions? Comments?
Yeah. I just would like to, I think we all should be making motions in second and making, doing things. I just.
If it's something that we are supportive of, we can accept there's a council comments. How about that?
Okay. Um, yeah. Um, uh, roll call please.
Councilmember Canis.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion to.
Thank you. The next one I have measured twice. It's going to be a consideration for the approval of the interim city administrator agreements, contracts and salaries.
I guess before you have, uh, agreements for myself, Pam Brachi and Chief McKee to, uh, perform our interim city administrator duties. So we've discussed it. Um, we intend to operate as a unified team and divide, uh, the previous city administrator duties equally among the three of us. And I think this agreement reflects that. I'll be taking on the bulk of the council packets, communications, infrastructure, as well as all of the planning, D D A and zoning. Ms. Brachi will be taking on the finance and all of the budgeting and H R, much of the uh, police fire, E M S, emergency management services and, um, I T will call to Chief McKee.
Thank you. I want to make a motion.
Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment uh, for, uh, the criminal brachi, Scott McKee and fifty sec, um, for their duties associated with, uh, the interim city manager, city administrator.
Very second.
Second.
Come on, come second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I, I would just like to say that we had a lengthy discussion about this at the study session, so if anyone is wondering why we're just approving it without asking any questions or anything, you can watch the, uh, video, uh, of the study session that was called at five thirty tonight.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have the appointment to the historic district commission for three years. The term will expire twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. In your packet, it appears only just that one person, which will be.
Dane Johnson.
Thank you.
Uh, Dane has previously, he's been serving, um, on historic district commission for the last three years. He's been a very valuable, um, H D C member, and I know he's looking forward to having the opportunity to continue his service.
I want to make a motion to, uh, appoint Dane Johnson, reappoint Dane Johnson to the historic district commission for three years.
I'll make the motion to reappoint Dane Johnson, uh, for the next three years.
Yeah.
For the next three years.
Support. It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussions?
That's a great person for the position, very knowledgeable, very sharp.
His resume is. I'd say his resume is awesome.
Thank you. Any further? Roll call please.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have the appointment of the Act fifty-one street administrator.
This mayor and council, the street administrator, every, um, can we have a new city manager or an interim city manager? We have to appoint somebody as the street administrator or the M dot, um, re-sign all the paperwork works for the M dot. We, um, have to have that person appointed and I am, um, recommending this, these seconds to be the person appointed for the street administrator because she is working with the street projects and that. And plus I have to sign as the finance director, so that would be the best way to handle that with her being the street administrator, myself being the finance person to sign the documents.
Thank you. Motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the attached resolution to designate soon the staff interim city administrator as a street administrator for the city of.
Second.
Thank you. As I move the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up is the resolution to rescind the cannabis application period.
So November first, twenty twenty-one, resolution seventy-three dash twenty-one was passed by the later to the council, which established the thirty-day application period to accept applications operating cannabis business in the city of River Village. Uh, subsequent to that time, the city administrator was integrally involved in the evaluation of those applications and recommendations of successful applicants to the city have designed a position. Therefore, my recommendation would be to rescind that resolution seventy-three dash twenty-one until a date to, a future date to deter and allow the city council to hire a new city administrator.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution rescinding the cannabis application period.
Second. Is there a second? Sorry. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just, um, just want to reiterate, uh, I'll go through all the things that we talked about in, in, in study session, but um, whatever, we're, we're not, we iterate what we talked about, which was, you know, a long, a long delay that we're, we're going to experience for this, especially have, you know, some negative economic development, uh, consequence to mitigate some of those, those consequences. One of the things that I threw out is, is beginning to discuss a, a second problem of, of this rescinded application would be to, uh, bring the ordinance in front of the voters, so, uh, we'll discuss on that hopefully at our future council meeting.
Thank you.
Fine.
Meanwhile. In no discussion, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Gary.
Yes.
Um, and then we added, uh, L to the extra request, which is giving, uh, the interim city managers the uh, permission to post the city. I make the most of that.
I'll make the motion to, um, can you say?
Just to give them permission to post the city clerk's job.
Okay. Um, I like, I move to, um, allow our city administrators to, interim city administrators to post the, um, the request for same clerk.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's a movement second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Councilmember Canis.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
No.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Thank you. City administrator report, is there anything that you all have to?
I just wanted to.
Next time, four mics.
Okay, I just wanted to let everybody know that the tree lighting ceremony was canceled because the high winds um Saturday that we were gonna have it, but we did have it this past Thursday.
Okay.
And we had thirty people turn out for the tree lighting and also for the trolley rides around the city and that, so that.
More high winds.
With more high winds, but that was nice. And then on Saturday, we had our breakfast with Santa, and we had fifty people, and it was so, so we're starting to hopefully pick up our activities again and getting kids involved again and the residents involved in doing activities within the city. And that's all I have, thank you.
Uh, city attorney, do you have anything?
Nothing.
Thank you, skipping down to the reports of boards, commissions, and committees, which first will be SAKLA. Rock. Report, SAKLA and SAKRA reports. Or it's already in the package. Okay, thank you, um, South Public Schools. Recreation Advisory Committee. No, Sunka. Thank you, Infrastructure Study Group.
Yeah, we'll have a little different report, so we we had a uh infrastructure meeting last week and talked about a variety of of topics, some of them are just go over to a high, high level. What we spent most of the time talking about was our water loss issues, as many people know, our our water loss over the last several years over, over forty percent. So we discussed all the things that we've done in the last few years to try to figure out what was going on with the water loss. The good news is, is we think we have finally found the problem, uh, which lies in in some of our biggest water using customers, you know, one and a half inch meters. There was an error, we found an error in the software that was essentially doing four digit reads on their meters instead of five digit reads, and so, um, to give an example, you know, if uh one of these customers had a start read of ten thousand and their end read was ten thousand twenty seven, instead of meter measuring twenty seven to bill them in terms of the number of units that they use, but we're only using the first four digits. Um, and so they were only getting billed for two, or actually, this example would be four, some score for the minimum. Um, and so we had estimated that that could be a very large percentage of of our water loss issue. We implemented some changes and we are guardedly optimistic that we have found the 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 actual issue, because what we did notice after, after one complete month of of having the error corrected, we've gone from an annual water loss ratio of about forty three percent and dropped down to about twelve percent. So hopefully in the next few months, we'll we'll see the same thing continuing on. We talked a little bit about brainstormed, you know, uh, potential backfilling uh options that we we might consider and bring to council, and so one of the things that I'll be asking for uh to be on the uh study session in January is to discuss whether or not we we want to entertain the thought of 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 backfilling for some of some of this water. And if so, how, so it's a full discussion of my my myself, we can talk about that in in January. We also noted that when they installed the um, the mast arms in uh in twelve and twelve and Southfield are our primary, I'm sorry, our primary water meter that where water comes into the city is at eleven in Southfield, our secondary meter, which we don't use unless something happens. The primary meter is on twelve in Southfield, and when they installed the mast arms, uh, with the road commission, saw those new mast arms, I think, a year ago, Pam?
Yes.
About a funny year ago. Yeah, time flies, two years ago, whatever it was, they cut the power to that meter. So we have our city engineer trying to work with SAKLA uh and 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 further down the road, the road permission to try to get that that corrected. We also uh approved our our road recommendation for uh twenty twenty three streets and a couple of additions to twenty twenty two, and that will be bringing that to council uh in in January as well. And the other thing that I just want to mention, um, I want to give a shout out to Bo Camorelli, uh, who is a resident, for those of you that don't know Bo, Bo took it upon himself to do about, I think he said about sixty hours, was a research on the water problem. He gathered information from SAKLA, from our audits, from public sources, national sources, and put together a very impressive report that uh really helped us out as a committee and as a state to to uh aggressive some of the water issues, and in fact, you know, we were elated when our water loss ratio dropped to twelve percent, but then Bo also noticed something that was a a very strange anomaly, it was like right around the same time that was happening. Our water usage per resident jumped up really, really high on an average basis relative to other cities around us and and uh national norm, so um it could be just the way it is, um, but we're, we're looking into that, our city engineers is getting data from SAKLA to try to get a sense of why, why we as a small city use so much more water than our neighbors, but again, the good, the good news is it looks like we're billing for uh the uh appropriate water use, but it is, it is kind of puzzling, and so we're we're looking into that, but Bo did a a great job on and and really did he did a great job and and was was very helpful, and so I just want to applaud him on his efforts and tell him that we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. And finally, commission hour.
Is there any unfinished or new business that we need to discuss? No. Um, is there any public comment, um, public comment is three minutes and it is to, uh, the feedback, it won't be a dialogue or discussion with uh council, but the council during their council comments can respond to any public comments. Okay, thank you. Hello, can you hear me, okay? Can you hear me, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, this is Jason Hammond, two seven five nine zero, California Southeast. City has lost yet another employee from its staff. The city now has four staff openings it needs to fill. With fewer hands on deck will be a very difficult job for city staff to deliver the top notch service residents expect. And I hope we all can adjust our expectations while the council searches for a new city administrator, and while the city administrator they hire searches for people to permanently add to the staff. It's unreasonable to expect short staff to answer every phone call on the first ring to respond to messages within an hour or to acknowledge C clicks fix submissions immediately. Please give the undermanned staff a break. I believe it is city council's responsibility to get to know staff and let them know how valuable they are to our city. When city council builds relationships with individual city employees, the staff feels more valued and the city works better. I remain curious to see how this council finds candidates for the city administrator role, how it evaluates the candidates, and how it includes input from city employees as well as residents in the process. It is important for residents to be considered first, but this is not a zero sum game. There is room to provide good service to residents and also make our city a place where people want to work. The city council needs to help the existing staff feel valued. City council needs to create a culture of respect for our city employees, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that, um, has a comment? Does anyone want to run to the other room if there's um anyone there? Thank you. So, um, we will go to mayor and council comments. And the one thing that um I will say is that I hope that everyone has a very happy holiday. Um, a happy and safe holiday, seeing that the uh, the coronavirus is, uh, has a little bit of an uptick, so stay safe. And I wish you well in the old year, and I wish you nothing but happiness and safety and peace in twenty twenty two. That's all I have. Counsel, anybody have comments?
Well, I'll say happy holidays and happy new year to our later village residents. I did send out a uh mailer wishing you all happy holidays, hopefully you can fill out the survey on there that will help, I believe, the infrastructure committee with the uh filling out, letting them know if they have water, I mean, the pipelines or, you know, whatever. Um, and thank you, and I just hope, um, everyone has a great year and see you in twenty twenty one. Twenty two.
Twenty twenty one.
Maybe.
Anyone else?
Want to wish everybody happy holidays, be safe and have a happy year, we'll see you in twenty twenty two.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Okay. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Holidays, um, hope everyone has a a great has an opportunity to take a break and rest a little bit, so that things are better in twenty twenty two. I do have one question about access to the Zoom meetings. I got a couple of messages and last time also, people who can't access the meetings, is there any kind of a process steps or something that people can take if they can't, if they can't get on, I go, I, you know, how are they let in or what's, what's the process?
All right, there is, I mean, they should try first clearing their cache if they're having a hard time with their, with their connection, whether they're running it through the app or running it through browser, if you're having issues, check up, check the cache. Make sure your popups do not block, because this will come up as a pop up, um, but they are, I, they're let in, um, there's, we have authorities currently monitoring the the attendees and and letting them in. Uh, as they, as they come in, we'll probably change the setting. In the new year, we continue with Zoom to allow for them to just come in and automatically be in the waiting room just due to staffing shortages and not necessarily having someone dedicated to
Okay.
monitoring the Zoom room.
Yeah.
So I did want to say, so everyone may not know what cash means, could you, but in line with terms.
No, I don't really know if I can, it's all the cookies and all this, all the other.
There you go, cookies.
Cookies, the data, the extra stuff. Just go into the setting.
Go to your, go to your help menu on your computer or your phone and look it up.
And just.
Or Google, how to how to clear cache on your particular device.
Yes, Siri or Google. Any other comments? Questions? Okay, well, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. Support, second. We're adjourned, happy holidays.